Very good. Good afternoon. Welcome to Thurston County Board of Health, a special meeting, work session, specifically continuing a discussion started in August on racial equity as it relates to public health and the Board of Health. My name is Ty Mensah. I'm the Chair of Thurston County Board of Health. We have Vice Chair Commissioner John Hutchings. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards, County Manager Ramiro Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, County Health Officer Dimiana Abdal Malik, Director of Public Health and Social Services Shelley Slaughter, various members of our public health team, including Mary Ann O'Garrow, Gretchen Poller, Keely Marino, and Clerk of the Board of Health Lydia Hodgkinson. And then we have Taylor Gardo, who I know is Thurston Thrives Director interim, or I believe, is that right? Okay. And then my executive assistant, Tom Cena Cooper. So I'm not sure, I'm gonna not sure.
Maybe I can.
Who should frame this and kind of get us started? Suggestions?
Yeah, could I frame the conversation, if I may?
Please.
And as you stated, Commissioner Mensah, this is a follow-up to the August session, but I think is a follow-up to other items that you are considering. And the justice today obviously is a very complex issue. There is a, has to be a commitment behind it to start addressing this racial equity, not just in, as a county government, perhaps in Thurston County and beyond. So the hope today is to have a roundtable conversation with the Board members. And hopefully at the end, we can start identifying some more, some next steps. And again, today, we're not going to resolve this issue. There's a very complex issue, but at least provide the Board of Health some guidance as to what we need to do next. Let me begin by just outlining some of the internal, at least, steps or initiatives that we're contemplating for your consideration. We discuss at some point, training, training to county staff. And in fact, tomorrow afternoon, they're going to have a conversation with HR as well as the YWCA to understand some of the nuances of the training they propose, that they have in mind. So county staff can benefit from that training. Related to that, we have added an item on the agenda to fund the training in the upcoming year, because everything costs money. You also, I have already started engaging with Maria Ponte, HR Director, start looking the internal policies, if there's any opportunities, the Board can consider to change some of those opportunities to address racial equity. We have also included on, for your consideration, while you deliberate the 2021 budget, a new position that is going to be really focused on racial equity and how we can move forward, not just as an organization, but perhaps as a, as a community in Thurston County. There has been already a, other efforts. The, we had a discussion of the old Human Rights in Committee that, and it was, I think, human, it was the Human Rights in Committee that was formed by the county way back in the 90s, and it stood up for a little while until the funding was taken away, and served until 1997, which I was part of that. And also, that was an option the Board will, will be considering, whether you'd like to revamp that, and what opportunities that brings to add additional elements to the, to the Human Rights Committee that at some point stood. As we move into that conversation, that is spilled over into the Law and Justice Council. And the Law and Justice Council had a discussion on this on the last meeting, the result of that meeting, which I believe Commissioner Mensah attended. It was to form an ad hoc subcommittee of the Law and Justice Council, that they started looking at this racial equity, but related to the, the law and justice itself, which has a bridge over to the overall initiative that you are discussing that today. So we, I volunteered to be part of this ad hoc committee of the Law and Justice Council. We had our first meeting on August 24, 2020. And we, the individuals who participated in that, initially was Patrick O'Connor, Steve Tealy, Lita Denfold, that's Council Member from Olympia, Keely Alson, Kristi Peters, Dayan Whaley, Katie Johnson, my assistant, myself. And we started having really a good conversation at that, what is it that we need to do in terms of the, this ad hoc committee related to racial equity on applying justice here in Thurston County. We had a conversation related, what a, what a great perspective the Justice Gonzalez provided at the Law and Justice Council. And that really gives some energy behind as to what we need to do and as to the next steps. We discussed the, there is a need to develop some goals and objectives of this ad hoc committee. They really started looking at some of the specific activities as to what the Law and Justice Council can consider, and eventually goes to the Board of County Commissioners. Some of the main objectives, obviously, inclusive of our community, making sure that we don't apply justice, that we apply justice equally based on the, on the, on the crimes involved, as opposed to the color of the skin, or perhaps of the, of the financial elements of those individuals involved in the law and justice. We decided, as a result of that, some of the outcomes, that we're going to be reviewing the data. Data related to those individuals who have been involved in the law and justice at the jail, some of the cases processed, and hopefully we can dive down in terms of ethnic backgrounds and perhaps economic backgrounds as well. We also discussed that it was going to be critical to involve pre-trial services on this ad hoc committee. And I believe that invitation has been extended. So the next meeting that we have on the Law and Justice Ad Hoc Committee is next week, where we're going to start defining and address, looking at the data that we have compiled from a law enforcement and see what is that surface to, to the, to the top in terms of this particular issue. That is going to bring over some great information, I believe, as to how the, perhaps, the, the, the Human Rights Committee can probably bring some of that data, as well as some of the other initiatives can be probably put a very comprehensive Human Rights Committee. They will look and, the, the members of the community may be part of that, that can provide some perspective, and they can provide some suggestions from the policy level for the Board to consider down the road. Also, we, we started looking at some of, that was internal to the county in a way. And this, I'm just framing this, and, you know, for, to begin the conversation. I know the staff has a lot more to add, and this is just my perspective, just to begin the conversation. On the, on the external aspects beyond the county, we had an initial conversation, I believe, with Commissioner Mensah and Shelley, that perhaps Thurston Thrives may be a key participant as to how this could be as initiative, or Thurston Thrives to start extending this in, to the community. Also, we're going to be looking as to, and I think Tom Webster, maybe somebody from the housing, going to be looking at ways as to how we apply the housing programs. And if there's any opportunities within the housing programs that we administer as a county, to start looking at racial equity related to this matter as well. I have also started, I am involved on the roundtable business. And, and in fact, we had a great conversation over two months ago, where I encourage the Executive Committee of the Roundtable to look a, on a specific training from South Pugilist Community College. And, and we went through a three-week, two-hour training related to racial equity and racial matters here in Thurston County, where a lot of members of the Roundtable participated. And, and we're going to have an standing agenda item at the Roundtable as to how we start moving forward in terms of racial equity. So that's the framework. And again, I think there is a lot of moving pieces, as well as a lot of opportunities. The, the Board of Health, as well as the Board of County Commissioners and the staff can start participating and starting to start making a difference to address this very complex and timely issue. So that's all I had from my perspective. I will give the floor maybe to Shelley and Mary Ann O'Garrow or Tyler to provide a perspective and for the Board to start having a roundtable conversation.
Thank you so much, Ramiro. The staff that presented at the last Board of Health have been invited again and are present here today to help engage in this discussion. And I've asked them to bring their innovative ideas with the framework of the date, the local data that Mary Ann O'Garrow presented to us at the last Board of Health meeting, demonstrating some of the disparities that Black Indigenous people of color experience right here in Thurston County. So I want to give the opportunity for Mary Ann to say a little bit more about that, and real briefly refresh us on some of those key indicators that could be a potential focus for us. And then, as well as from the other members, and also to hear from Taylor from Thurston Thrives to see what kind of conversations have advanced since then in terms of what role Thurston, Thurston Thrives may play. And then just overall, our department has had a longstanding value of equity, and our mission changed a couple of years ago to be working together to achieve the highest level of health and well-being. And that is the very definition of equity. And equity is one of the strategic pillars of our department. And we have many different activities, initiatives, and programs that we've been working to advance to address this, this issue. And it's more important than ever that we keep up that work. So with that, I'll just, I think, hand it to Mary Ann to say a little bit more, and then Taylor, and then the rest of the group.
I didn't today bring a, a presentation with data, and you'll see why in just a minute when I turn it over to Taylor. But what I would say is a couple of things. Last time when I presented, just to summarize, a couple of things that I said is, race, racism, and health equity impacts the lifespan, impacts what happens to you when you're born, how long you live, your physical health, your mental health, the environment you live in, public safety, housing, everything about what occurs to you. And what we're interested in seeing is that race does not predict your health, well-being, or success. And one of the projects that we embarked on that, we were so pleased that Thurston Thrives has been a partner with us, and began with us in 2019, and has always been a great partner with, with us, but uniquely looking at an equity gap in Thurston County, is something we want to continue, finish, and really explore in great detail. I was hoping that Taylor could share with you kind of what our, our plan is, and to really make the best use of this effort, and turn it over to her. And then, after that, let Gretchen share with you briefly, kind of what she was looking at doing with some of the things that we've been seeing around the birth outcomes that are extremely concerning, that we're seeing around race and ethnicity in Thurston County, before we kind of go on to some other opportunities, if that's okay, Taylor?
Good afternoon. As Mary Ann said, Thurston Thrives has been partnering with her to be able to pool information from local county data. And the beginning of our partnership really enlightened us on somewhere of the gaps were when it came to race and equity. We have desires, and Thurston Thrives thinks it's the utmost important to continue pulling this information. Data around the county's race and equity is something that we know can give us a bigger picture. And Thurston Thrives feels as if we aren't going to be able to identify our areas of opportunity until we can see the details in which we have gaps for our community. We can do so through the community assessment. There's a lot that came out of the last time that we pulled data. We see that from the time you enter this life to the time that you leave, there is some disparity. And in order for us to continue to make meaningful actions for those in the community who identify as Black Indigenous people of color, we got to start somewhere, and that's the groundwork of the data. In terms of Thurston Thrives and the desire that my executive committee has to take on this topic, as Ramiro mentioned, it is a very, very tough topic to take on, and we know that. We have a lane that we know that we owe our community, we're responsible for our community to answer to their health and to provide equity for all. And through the Health Lens, Thurston Thrives and the Chamber Foundation is here and willing to help support the county make meaningful actions when it comes to race and equity. We have not yet built out exactly what that would look like. As you guys all know, Rome was not built in a day. But we do have the data from Mary Ann. We have the co-chairs, Megan Sullivan and Chris Wells, who do phenomenal work in their lanes. And we are hoping to bring our bright minds together at Thurston Thrives and identify really where we can be the most impactful when it comes to health for all through the equity lens.
Thank you, Taylor. Gretchen, we, Mary Ann said you would be next, so.
Okay, great. And, yeah. So one of the areas that we talked about during the last session was around infant mortality. And I had noted that our infant mortality rate in Thurston County was higher than the state average, and that was identified in our Maternal-Child Health Needs Assessment. And Mary Ann shared data with us showing that for, for babies that are Black, they are, that their rate was twice as high as the baby that was white. And so, one of the steps that I have taken since we last met was to reach out to a couple providers to, to explore interest in pulling a group of providers and other, other people that touch the lives of families during pregnancy and early childhood together to, to start to address this. And that would include a number of different things, looking at the stress that families are experiencing, looking at, you know, blood pressure assessment protocols, just all kinds of different things that we know impact the, the ability for that mom to carry baby full-term and to have a healthy pregnancy. And then, what, what happens with that baby in that first year after the baby's born? So the, the providers I spoke with were extremely interested. And so that's something that I plan to do in the, in the coming months, is to get that group pulled together and start, start to work on this.
So, so, so one of the things from a support standpoint, supporting that kind of focused effort on a specific finding, as Taylor mentioned, we want to release the first Health Equity Gap Report for Race and Ethnicity. What we're aiming for is December, our first round of findings. If it's okay, Keely, if you could share what we did on Friday, and, to share with them, or something we would like to see them continue to help us support what we submitted on Friday, and what we would like their effort to continue to support around that next, if that's okay?
Sure. Thank you for the prompt. So on Friday, Mary Ann and I worked together to finalize our application and send in the application to become a member of the Government Alliance on Racial Equity. We applied on behalf of Public Health and Social Services, just starting there. That is one of the main strategies as identified in the five-year plan. And I'll remind everyone that the five-year plan has five objectives, one of which is addressing racial equity in the homeless crisis response system. And one of those strategies, now that we've met, hopefully we're accepted, is joining the Government Alliance on Racial Equity. Part of joining GARE is that we get technical assistance. And one of the ways in which we can have technical assistance or access it is in doing an assessment. So doing an assessment, a workplace assessment, on what does our workforce look like? Who is in leadership? Who's in executive leadership, middle management, frontline staff? And taking a really serious and important look at how are we representing our community in terms of our workforce? And then where are people of color, Black Indigenous people of color being placed? Are they being given equal opportunity or equitable opportunity to be promoted or get into positions of leadership? If we have a lack of representation of people of color in leadership, then what is it about hiring practices, or where are we recruiting, or what, what are some things that we're just not taking into consideration? So really looking forward to, to receiving some of that technical assistance as we move forward, and perhaps, as we, if we're accepted, and, and we start working with the technical assistance offered, offered by GARE, then maybe that's something the entire county might want to engage in at some point. I have much experience talking with folks that are working with the YWCA's intercultural foundations work right now. I'm excited to hear that that's a conversation that's moving forward. I know it is hard work. I know agencies that are in their second or third year and are really, it's still really quite a battle. And it is difficult and grueling, and they're getting through it. And I'm excited to hear about their triumphs that go along with their struggles as well. I've been attending some trainings on racial equity and homelessness through the, the Center for Innovations. So the Center for Innovations is a national effort that has offered this four-week training opportunity. And one of the quotes that I, I really appreciate is, "Change is inevitable, but transformation is a conscious choice," is a quote that came from that training. And I think that, you know, we can, change is happening. As we see 2020 as an excellent example of how change comes at us every single moment of every single day. But choosing transformative practice with regards to racial equity in this case is a conscious choice. So I applaud the Board of Health and, and Public Health and Social Services for taking this, and County Manager for taking this so seriously.
And if it's, if it's okay, one other thing we were, we were hoping you would consider, or at least think about, actually, two more things. One is, as we intentionally go forward and think about things, as a, as a county government entity, we, we do collect a lot of data and kind of think about, as we collect data about services and programs, that we do intentionally think about how we collect and release data about race and ethnicity, and thinking about making that something that we more intentionally make a requirement to collect in a quality way, and making sure that's an effort that we do if we aren't already doing it and releasing it. Because that is something that people are asking for. It is not always as easy as it looks. Anyone who's in the data world knows it's not always as easy as it looks. It is not always, having talked to Chief Chuma in the jail, it is not always as easy as it sounds. And there can be a willingness, and the way can be different. But the conversation, the openness, the effort, for example, in COVID-19, that element was not a requirement initially. We made the effort to collect it. It was voluntary. We released it. We made effort to quality collect it. And it made a difference in showing disparities, inclusive of some things that are a little unique here, like Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander looks a little different in Thurston County. That's not something you hear in the news. But that is one thing that when you look in the science, the literature, and the research, making that effort to collect it, because it is an effort, to look at your data systems and how you do that is really important. Because if you can't see it, and if you don't release it, you don't have a way to know anything. That would be something that if we can intentionally think about that. And also, something that you all are doing, but to keep doing, is to keep thinking about how we can keep having conversations, what opportunities there are for community forums, not just, I know you're, you're talking about different kind of formal committees or groups, but forums, which can be one, two, or three times, facilitated, whatever that might look like, are great opportunities for discussions, are, are great things to do, even in hard times with hard conversations, whether they're about topics, specific justice-involved topics, housing, health, whatever those are. We continue to hear that in our, in our world of work as we go, as those are important things to have conversations. Even if we don't necessarily like some of the questions we're being asked, or we don't have the answers, it's very important. And when we look at kind of what that, that engaging back and forth is really important, and that's something we just really encourage you to think about how you can intentionally build in conversations that aren't just formal settings, formal meetings, formal board events, formal institutional organizations, but, but community-based opportunities would be amazing, if that's something that is possible. And with that, I can see the clock and the time. And so I will stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So, yeah, we've ticked through, not sure how to proceed. Let me just maybe help, maybe advance the conversation by just kind of outlining something that I've been kind of waiting. So I had kind of a list of things that I thought we might want to do. And most of them have actually, it sounds like, there's actually been forward movement on a good number of them. Mary Ann just added one to my list. And just, my list was training opportunities. And we've talked about, and I was interested in both GARE and YWCA were the two I was familiar with. And those are the two that have been mentioned. And it sounds like there's been follow-up. And in, in the case of GARE, we're, we're moving forward with, with that, with that application. With YWCA, there's more to come on that. A staffing position, which we talked about as being something that will be discussed in the budget, as I think Robin laid out a placeholder for us, proposed that. So that's something that we've teed up for further movement. The third thing was community input. And my thought was some formulation of the Cultural Diversity and Human Rights Council. Mary Ann has added to that by throwing out the idea of maybe more one-off forums and other settings where it wouldn't necessarily be a formal committee. Thurston Thrives was fourth on my list, and where, what role they could play. And Taylor has kind of, without being too specific, she has kind of said that, that their organization is wide open to that participation. And then, so that, that was my list. And then Mary Ann added a thing that I added, which is data collection. And I don't know if, if that's kind of a separate thing, but it's something we could focus on in various contexts. How can we collect more data with a more intentional purpose of focusing on it? So there, there's a whole bunch of things that we could do, we are doing. So that's one piece. What should we be doing in individual items? And then the second piece, that's, because this whole conversation sprang from a proposal from Thurston Thrives Directors about a resolution. And we've talked about this, whether it's necessary. So that's kind of the whole thing is, do we just, do we just attack these individual pieces as individual pieces? Or should we put some kind of overarching plan, resolution, together, organizing them so the community sees what we're doing? And I don't know if that's necessary. And I don't know if that's necessary. It's just something I would like to hear from my teammates about. I could see a good approach either way. But those are kind of the things that have been bouncing around my head related to this discussion. Ramiro, were you waving your hand?
Yeah, when it's time, Commissioner.
Yeah, well, that's it. I just, I'm reacting to what we heard just to try to advance this discussion and see where it needs to go. Go ahead, Ramiro.
I don't know if the Commissioners, the two Commissioners have the floor, election perspective. What I was going to suggest is-
I'll turn to them next.
So what I was going to suggest is perhaps for the Board to consider directing staff to come back with, to you, with an actual plan. They have specific activities with a specific timelines. So start getting to that level of detail. You know, I provide my perspective related to having a resolution declaring an emergency. I'm not quite sure what effectiveness that will be, since we can probably have a series of, you know, declare emergencies. But I think what is going to make a difference, I believe, is the actions. The actions the Board of County Commissioners, the Board of Health and its staff is going to do to start addressing this issue is what I think is going to bring a lot more value than an actual resolution. So my suggestion to you, and I think the staff has provided to you in the briefing paper, is to direct the staff to come back to you with an actual, an action plan. I think there's a lot of global conversation today, but I think it's worth just to put into an actionable plan with the specific timelines for the Board to consider.
Commissioners.
I would-
Commissioner Edwards.
Who do you call? I didn't get who you called on, sir.
I'm calling you, sir, Commissioner Edwards.
Okay. I think as we go forward, along with whatever recommendations come out, I'd like to have some examples, some real-life examples here locally that are relative to our situation here at the county or Thurston County. I don't know how far we're trying to make this change or address this issue, if it's the county workforce promotions, hiring policy, just here at the county family? Or is it, are we trying to affect the school districts, for an example, or jobs in general? So I guess at some point, and I think we're out of time at this point, but I wouldn't mind relaying some of the issues that maybe I've seen or not seen. I've seen elsewhere, but maybe not, maybe never have I seen those same scenarios happen here. Again, I guess I call on my age as an example. I've been all over the world, eastern seaboard and down south and seen quite a bit. And I know there are inequities, but in comparing those to what we're dealing with, I guess I'd like to get a little sense of what the issue here is locally and then how we would address the solution to that issue, rather than maybe hypotheticals. I know what Gretchen was talking one time before. I'd asked her and a lot of the reference material she was using was from around the nation or something. But I mean, I know we have things like the COVID issue is more toxic to certain groups than others or something like that. And I don't know what we can do about that. But it's an issue, so I don't know how to address that. And so I think we're out of time for now. Were we going to go to 3:30? Are we going to go at?
The Board Chair.
Mr. Chair, how late are we going today? Because I could go on.
We're scheduled till 3:00, but my 3 o'clock is with Kelly, so I think we've reset it. So I can keep going. It depends on whether Commissioner Hutchings is available.
Well, I see Hutch, Hutch has got his hand up there and I've been talking for a few minutes. So I'll shut up for a few minutes, Jose.
I've done some reading on this recently. And so I came into this thinking more philosophically and way up high in a hot air balloon. And so I'll just give you that. I'm so thrilled to hear that it's actually getting some nuts and bolts to it right now, some actual framework for justice. So one of, a couple of things, random thoughts I wrote down is that we've got to acknowledge the fundamental truth that humanity is one. Humanity is one. And our challenge is to create some type of framework for justice. And this is going to require a concerted and sustained effort on our part, everybody's part, which includes a truthful and honest discourse of our current conditions and the causes and such. And remembering that the richness of our country even is, and the diversity is based on our founding ideals of liberty and justice. And that draws millions of people to America. And so they are watching, our own community is watching. And I heard community involvement and breakout sessions, whatever informs into, our community is watching as well to see what we're going to do and they're begging for it. And it's so powerfully important. It's so cool that we're doing this. So on the base level, basic level, when I looked at the briefing paper, I saw four options. And the fourth option is no, nothing, do nothing, which is just moronic. But what I didn't see in here was a one-year internal facing. And I'm not advocating for it. It's just we have the internal, six-month internal, external, six-month internal only. And then we have the one-year internal, external, but we don't have a one-year internal. So yes, that's just, I just saw that initially when I read the paper. And so with that, I'm done, Chair. Thank you.
Well, so I like what Ramiro's suggestion. I was a little averse to the emergency declaration concept, but I'm not averse at all to an action plan with really concrete, specific steps that are outlined. And so I like that idea. If my teammates would join me in making that, giving that direction, I'm comfortable with that. Keely, is your hand up?
It is. I just want to make sure that when, depending on who is putting together the action plan, that if it's predominantly a homogenous group of white or Caucasian presenting people, that when we're coming together to form a racial equity action plan, we need, there's steps that come before making a meaningful action plan without inadvertently causing harm. And so I just want to say that, yes, absolutely, an action plan would be great, in my opinion. I want to make sure that we do it without causing harm to folks that may be at the table that are Public Health and Social Services staff or whoever, that we're doing it as thoughtfully as possible, maybe with some guidance or with an assessment prior to moving forward.
Excellent suggestion. I guess the question is, how do we bring that to concrete fruition? Through public health, what was your concept, Ramiro? When you say staff, were you, were you, we're sitting today as a Board of Health-
Yeah, I guess the idea that I have was a little bit higher level than Akili stated, more of a 30,000-foot level. And within the actionable items would be how are we going to be engaging the community to have the right representation to start meaningful discussions? So I totally agree with Keely, but my idea of the actionable items, it was more of a higher elevation where then we start diving down into those specifics, as Keely mentioned, which is extremely important.
Yeah, community engagement has got to be a necessary component. But I agree with you, Ramiro. What I don't want to see is us spinning our, you know, if we try to get that at the front end, we may, I don't want a long delay, spinning our wheels, not quite knowing how to start it. As long as we're committed to a community engagement component that's substantial and meaningful.
And on the plan, Bob, this is just a plan, the actual plan will be a community engagement. But you know, this is a long haul. This is a long term. This is going to go probably beyond our positions, beyond our functions here in the county. But I think we are in the position to set the stage for the future. And that's what I believe where the commitment has to be. Is setting the stage for the future as to how the next Ramiro, the next Robin, or the next Commissioners, for that matter, can continue that effort. And I guess that's probably where I'm coming from.
Any more reaction or input to that? Ramiro's kind of framing of the potential next step. Does everybody feel comfortable with that idea approach? Mary Ann, put you on the spot? I know you-
Yay!
You feel confidently, okay.
This is a great outcome, as far as I'm concerned, because we're moving forward. And it's a blend of options, which is more powerful, more comprehensive. And I have to tell you, I'm just pleased, like there was a next meeting, there's a next discussion. I know you're committed to it. And like Romero just said, you're committed to it for the long haul. And there's so much we need to change and we can change in Thurston County for the better of our community. And so I'm really pleased for the investment you intend to put into this. So, but we need to hit acceleration fast. So I want to do that.
This is very profound and meaningful. I like what Ramiro framed it.
Commissioner Edwards, are you, do you have any more input on this proposed kind of next step?
I know, because I don't think you have enough time. So I'm looking forward to a future conversation, I guess, huh? I think we're going to have a few on this issue.
Oh, there's going to be many.
All right, well then, I think we're good for that next step. I'll kind of let Ramiro guide us, I guess, through when we might need to reconvene on this issue. Do we want to talk about that?
Yeah, let's see if we can have a meeting of the minds with the staff and start framing how this high-level action plan should become to you. And we will schedule a meeting coming up in the next couple, three weeks.
And to the extent, my opinion is that to the extent that we can involve Taylor, Thurston Thrives-
Absolutely, yeah.
That's a great idea. Okay, thank you. Anything else for good of the order here at this work session? Think nothing, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you.